For attendance.
Mrs. Snoblin.
Here.
Mr. Block.
Here.
Mr. Schreiber.
Here.
Mr. Mormon.
Here.
Mrs. Sorensen.
Here.
Mr. Markson.
Here.
Mr. Powers is absent, but we have quorum.
Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda as always is public participation. There aren't many members of the public here, but there are some, so if any of you would like to address the board, please feel free to do so. Just step up to the podium and we'll be anxious to hear what you have to say. Anybody would like to address the board? Seeing no one, we'll move on. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the canvassing of the school board election, which took place last month. I need a motion to approve the abstract of votes. I assume that the board had reviewed the abstract and I think everybody has a copy in their packet tonight, and I would entertain a motion when you're ready.
I move the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education to accept and approve the abstract of votes of the April 9, 2013 election as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? This only needs a voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion has passed unanimously. Now I would like the board to review the resolution authorizing election of new board members and to make a motion for approval. Whereas it has been presented to this Board of Education and duly filed with Secretary of the Rother, reported Lake County Camvassing Board of the Annual Election Held in and For District 115 on Tuesday, April 9, 2015.
Mr. Block.
Mr. Block.
Forty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-six thousand were cast in Lake County.
It was actually April 7th, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Oh, thank you. April 7th, 2015. Thank you. Am I, do I have to read all this, Madam Secretary? Yeah, well, okay. So, which reports show that a set election, forty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-six ballots were cast in Lake County and whereas votes cast for members of the Board of Education, District 115, are David Lane for a two-year term, nine hundred and seventeen votes, Reese Markson for a four-year term, nine hundred and six votes, Diana Kryling for a four-year term, eight hundred and ninety-nine votes, Leece Elliott for a four-year term, eight hundred and ninety-six votes, where three candidates shall be seated with four-year terms and one candidate shall be seated with a two-year term. It therefore is hereby resolved and declared by this Board of Education, the school District 115, Lake County, Illinois, that David Lane, Reese Markson, Diana Kryling, and Leece Elliott have been elected members of said Board of Education. I would now entertain that motion.
I move that Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing election of new board members as presented.
Second. Thank you very much. This only requires a voice vote as well. All in favor of new board members?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I would hope not. You all passed unanimously. You'd be pleased to know. I think it's now time for me to administer the oath of office to the newly-elected school board members. Is that correct? And do you have copies of said oath for them? Okay, so why don't we start off with Minister Lane? If you would come up to the podium, please. Will you read the text in the sack?
How about that?
I'm sure the president's going to be in much better shape. It is. Would you raise your right hand, please?
Yep.
Repeat after me. Aye, David Lane.
Aye, David Lane.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of a member of the Board of Education.
Of the office of a member of the Board of Education.
Of Lake Forest High School District 115.
Of Lake Forest High School District 115.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear that.
I further swear that.
I shall respect taxpayer interests.
I shall respect taxpayer interests.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect.
I shall encourage and respect.
The free expression of opinion by my fellow board members.
The free expression of opinion by my fellow board members.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority.
As an individual.
As an individual.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
And I shall abide by.
And I shall abide by.
Majority decisions of the board.
Majority decisions of the board.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
And such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
And such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Whoops. There you go. Thank you.
If you're very careful, this is being watched by millions of millions.
Yes. Very gross.
So if you raise your right hand, please. Aye, Leece Elliott.
Aye, Leece Elliott.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of a member of the Board of Education.
Of Office of a Member of the Board of Education.
Of Lake Forest High School District Number 115.
Of Lake Forest High School District Number 115.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear that.
I further swear that.
I shall respect taxpayer interests.
I shall respect taxpayer interests.
By saving as, serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall, I shall encourage and respect.
I shall encourage and respect.
The free expression of opinion.
The free expression of opinion.
By my fellow board members.
By my fellow board members.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
While also respecting the privacy of students and employees.
While also respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member.
I shall recognize that a board member.
Has no legal authority as an individual.
Has no legal authority as an individual.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote.
At a public board meeting.
At a public board meeting.
And I shall abide by.
And I shall abide by.
Majority decisions of the board.
Majority decisions of the board.
While retaining the right to seek changes and such decisions.
While retaining the right to seek changes and such decisions.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Kryling. Aye, Diana Kryling.
Aye, Diana Kryling.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of a member of the Board of Education.
Of the Office of a Member of the Board of Education.
Of Lake Forest High School District Number 115.
Of Lake Forest High School's School District Number 115.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear that.
I further swear that.
I shall respect taxpayer interests.
I shall respect taxpayer interest.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect.
I shall encourage and respect.
The free expression of opinion by my fellow board members.
The free expression of opinion by my fellow board members.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority.
As an individual.
As an individual.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote.
At a public board meeting.
At a public board meeting.
And I shall abide by majority decisions.
And I shall abide by majority decisions.
Of the board.
Of the board.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
And such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
And such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Markson. If you'd raise your right hand, please, sir. Repeat after me. Aye, Reese Markson.
Aye, Reese Markson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of a member of the Board of Education of Lake Forest High School District Number 115.
Of a member of Board of Education of Lake Forest High School District Number 115.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear that.
I further swear that.
I shall respect taxpayer interests.
I shall respect taxpayer interests.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect.
I shall encourage and respect.
The free expression of opinion.
The free expression of opinion.
By my fellow board members.
By my fellow board members.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I should, I shall recognize that a board member.
I shall recognize that a board member.
Has no legal authority as an individual.
Has no legal authority as an individual.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote.
At a public board meeting.
At a public board meeting.
And I shall abide by.
And I shall abide by.
Majority decisions of the board.
Majority decisions of the board.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
In such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
In such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Didn't hit my finger on the microphone button. As I say, this brings to an end my service to this board as well as Mrs. Snoblin's and Mrs. Sorensen, and I just want to express my deep appreciation to the community one last time for the honor of being able to do this, so thank you very much. I will now intine a motion. I need to find my sheet again. Misplaced it. Yeah, for the current board to, uh... Current, uh, school board to adjourn. CADA. Board Secretary tells me, so as I say, I'll entertain that motion, please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, I presume this is just a roll call vote, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Schreiber.
Aye.
Mr. Markson.
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblin.
Aye.
Mr. Mormon.
Aye.
Mr. Block.
No. Yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Sorensen.
Try to vote to be unseated, unseated yourself.
Motion carries.
If there's any question, you're currently a ship without a rider. This is my big moment. Called being the, to order the meeting of Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education. I'd like to ask for a motion for a President Pro Tem, please. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education approve Dave Schreiber as President Pro Tem. Second.
Do I have a, may I have a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Markson.
Aye.
Dr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Mormon.
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber.
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling.
Aye.
Mr. Lane.
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to nominate the President of Board of Education?
I move that the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education nominate Mr. Reese Markson as President of the District 115 Board of Education.
Second. May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mormon.
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling.
Aye.
Dr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber.
Aye.
Mr. Lane.
Aye.
Mr. Markson.
Thinking. Oh, aye.
Motion carries, Mr. Markson.
Congratulations.
District 115 Board of Education of May 4th, 2015. Uh, the first order of business, I would like to move that Lake Forest School District 115 Board of Education nominate Mr. John Powers as Vice President. May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schreiber.
Aye.
Mr. Markson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling.
Aye.
Mr. Mormon.
Aye.
Still got Mr. Block down here. Dr. Lane.
Aye.
I've got them all wrong. Dr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Lane. Carries.
I would like to move that Lake Forest School District 115 Board of Education nominate Mr. Ted Mormon as Secretary of the District 115 Board of Education. May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Kryling.
Aye.
Mr. Lane.
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber.
Aye.
Mr. Mormon.
Aye.
Dr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Markson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Our action item is the approval of outgoing board member resolutions. First, some personal comments. This community of Knollwood, Lake Forest, and Lake Bluff owes a deep gratitude to Dick and Nikki. They will never know what goes on behind the scenes, and I'm a short-termer in this, on this board, and the amount of effort and passion that these people have put in over the last eight years, eight months, twelve, twelve months, will never be known, and that's unfortunate. I appreciate you. Personal story, when everybody lectures their kids, I lecture my kids, when I remember the lecture I gave them when they started high school. Make sure you make new friends. You know, don't stick to your old group. And they rightfully, like most kids do, shot back and, "Dad, when was the last time you made a new friend?" And I shot back with, "Well, I have lots of colleagues and associates." I can tell you that I've made three good friends, hopefully six good friends, in my short term here, and I know where you live, I know your cell phone numbers, I know your home phone numbers, I know your email addresses, and you will not be forgotten. So, thank you very much. Whereas Ann Sorensen has faithfully served Lake Forest High School and its students with dedication as a member of the Board of Education of Lake Forest High School District 115 since 2014, and whereas she was a member of the Education Committee from 2014, 2015, and offered oversight to major district educational initiatives, new programs, and made recommendations to the Board of Education on major topics or matters related to curriculum and instruction. Whereas she served on the Policy Committee from 2014, 2015 to ensure that the district was up to date and comprehensive in scope in all of its school policies, and whereas she was a member of the Faculty Administration and Board Fab Committee from 2014 to 2015 to enhance collaboration and communication on matters of mutual interest. And whereas her commitment to her responsibilities as a board member, calm and thoughtful nature, and dedication to the students, staff, and community of District 115 are appreciated by her fellow board members and the District 115 community that she has served. Now be it resolved that the Board of Education of Lake Forest High School District 115 does express for itself, as well as the parents, students, staff, faculty, and the citizens of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and Knollwood, its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Ann Sorensen for all she has done to advance the quality of education in our communities. Adopted this fourth day of May, 2015. Whereas Nikki Snoblin has faithfully served Lake Forest High School and its students with dedication as a member of Board of Education, of the Board of Education of Lake Forest High School District 115 from 2007 through 2015, and whereas during her tenure, she served as Secretary of the Board from 2013 to 2015 and provided sound leadership and diplomacy, and whereas she served as a member of the Operations Committee and its Chairman from 2007 to 2009, and provided a community perspective, direction, and oversight of district's operations in the areas of transportation, building and grounds, and food service. And whereas she served on the Education, Research, and Development Committee, EDRED, from 2009 to 2011, and monitored education policy at the state level, particularly issues that are priorities for our district. And whereas she was a member of the Faculty Administration and Board Fab Committee from 2012 to 20, I'm sorry, 2010 to 2012, to enhance collaboration and communication on matters of mutual interest, and whereas she was a member of the Education Committee from 2009 to 2015, and served as its Chairman from 2011 to 2015, and offered oversight to major district educational initiatives, new programs, and made recommendations to the Board of Education on major topics or matters related to curriculum and instruction. And whereas she served as the Board of Education liaison to the Lake Forest High School Foundation from 2011 to 2012, and offered insight to an important organization that provides funding to advance academics for all students at Lake Forest High School, and whereas she served on the Policy Committee from 2013 to 2014 to ensure the district was up to date and comprehensive in scope in all of its school policies, and whereas she served on the Tri-District Committee from 2014 to 2015 to ensure continued coordinated drive to offer the highest quality of education to children in Lake Bluff, Lake Forest, and Knollwood, and a closer, more collaborative working relationship among the communities of three school districts, and whereas her commitment to her responsibilities as a board member, strong and insightful leadership, and dedication to the students, staff, and community of District 115 are appreciated by her fellow board members and the District 115 community that she has served. Now be it resolved that the Board of Education of Lake Forest High School District 115 does express for itself, as well as the parents, students, staff, faculty, and the citizens of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and Knollwood, its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Nikki Snoblin for all she has done to advance the quality of education in our communities. Adopted this fourth day of May, 2015. Whereas Dick Block has faithfully served Lake Forest High School and its students with dedication as a member of the Board of Education of Lake Forest High School District 115 from 2006 to 2015, and whereas during his tenure, he served as President of the Board from 2014 to 2015, Vice President from 2013 to 2014, and Secretary from 2006 to 2013, and provided sound leadership and diplomacy, and whereas he was a member of the Education Committee from 2006 to 2008, and provided oversight to major district educational initiatives, new programs, and made recommendations to the Board of Education on major topics or matters related to curriculum and instruction. Whereas he served on the, as a member of the Operations Committee from 2008 to 2012, and its Chairman from 2011 to 2012, and provided a community perspective, direction, and oversight of district operations in the areas of transportation, building, and grounds, and food service. And whereas he served on the Finance and Operations Committee as Chairman from 2013 to 2014, and provided sound leadership and ensured oversight to all major district revenues, expenses, and investment policies through challenging financial times, and whereas he served on the Tri-District Committee from 2011 to 2015 to ensure a continued coordinated drive to offer the highest quality of education to children in Lake Bluff, Lake Forest, and Knollwood, and a closer, more collaborative working relationship among the communities of three school districts. And whereas he was a member of the Joint Shared Services Committee from 2013 to 2015 to provide top-quality education in a financially responsible manner to the children of both Lake Forest School District 67 and Lake Forest High School District 115, and whereas he was a member of the Faculty and Board Fab Committee from 2014 to 2015 to enhance collaboration and communication on matters of mutual interest. And whereas his commitment to his responsibilities as a board member, institutional memory, thoughtful preparation, and his dedication to the students, staff, and community of District 115 are appreciated by fellow board members and the District 115 community that he has served. Now be it resolved that the Board of Education of Lake Forest High School District 115 does express for itself, as well as the parents, students, staff, faculty, and the citizens of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and Knollwood, its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Dick Block for all he has done to advance the quality edu, quality of education in our communities. Adopted this fourth day of May, 2015. Thank you, Dick. So we have big shoes to fill. We have to wear lots of socks. That's what someone told me once, to fill those shoes. I move that the Lake Forest District... Oh, may I have a motion to approve the outgoing board members' resolutions?
So moved.
No, actually. I move that the Lake Forest High School District 115 Board of Education approve the resolutions as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
A roll call vote?
Mr. Markson.
Aye.
Dr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Mormon.
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber.
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling.
Aye.
Mr. Lane.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Order of business that we have is the approval of the 2015-2016 board meeting schedule. May I have a motion to approve the 2015-2016 board meeting dates?
I move that the Board of Education of Lake Forest High School District 115, Lake Forest, Illinois, approve the 2015-2016 calendar of board meeting dates as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on dates? No? Do we need a roll call vote on the dates?
Please.
May I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Mormon.
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling.
Aye.
Dr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber.
Aye.
Mr. Lane.
Aye.
Mr. Markson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
So that's it? I know. I move that the Board of Education, oh, no, I, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn? I was gonna do it myself. I'm so anxious, you know?
I move that the Board of Education of Lake Forest School District 115, Lake Forest, Illinois, oh, sorry. I move, uh, Lake Forest, Illinois, adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carry. I declare the meeting of Lake Forest Community High School District 115, May 4, 2015, as adjourned.